Planning board meeting, supposed to do this once by annual or just once?
Twice.
So do it again in July?
We're gonna do it again in July. So we're gonna stand for the pledge allegiance. Uh, six P M. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so we're gonna, um, probably just go into the planning board first. That way if you guys don't wanna hang out, you don't have to. So we don't really have a whole lot on the agenda as far as planning board in this meeting, but I just wanted to see how, how do you guys feel everything's going? So you haven't had any negatives?
No, not really.
We've addressed some of the concerns that we've had in the board. As far as where our next phase for the next, let's say, five months is gonna be is figuring out what ordinances we should be looking at to make sure they're ready for the town meeting.
Okay.
So, um, our biggest, uh, I'll say roadblock was going to be getting our current ordinances, getting the fees out of the ordinances and getting them in, as well, if these schedules already set by you folks. But, um, to avoid confusion, one of our concerns was if the fee schedule says one thing and an ordinance says another. So what our big push was to do was to get the fee, uh, a fee in the ordinance to say, see fee schedule. And Emmett, after exhaustive work with the MMA, Norma found out that we can do that without bringing those ordinances to the town because it doesn't change the ordinance.
I gotcha.
So, that is done. With that, it was a huge hurdle, you know, when you consider how many ordinances we have and how many fees are associated with the ordinance. So, um, we've kind of milled around some ideas, um, but do we have anything from the select board? Things, things you've heard from, from the good people of Sumner? Things that you've heard, um, that need to be looked at, tweaked, changed?
Yeah, the ordinance on the, on the pot shops.
Okay.
Uh, I understand that they get out of paying the fee that they initially said that they would be paying because they helped develop the ordinance. And the way the ordinance was written, uh, it, it doesn't allow the town to, uh, charge them that fee yearly.
So it's actually a multifaceted issue. I think that there's, there's several different ways we could go forward. We could go forward and, uh, change the ordinance to add caregivers to the, to the actual, to a fee schedule. Most towns have caregivers attached to the fee schedule. The part that is really difficult with the pot shops, and this is something that Norma and I discovered after going to several of the cannabis, um, uh, trainings that have been taking place over the last four months. Uh, Marcia for a cot went to one as well. Um, folks are, what, what the state is finding is that folks are, are getting in under the rules of a cannabis distribution of shop, but they're doing it from, from locations that make it very hard to establish that that location is being used as a shop. You follow?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not saying that that's happening in our town, but that's what the state of Maine has, has issued, uh, as a warning to municipalities who, you know, could be getting the runaround from, from the cannabis growers. In addition to that, there are other concerns that are coming down the pipe from the state as far as, uh, how cer- how certain things are extracted, the types of, uh, hazard, hazardous materials that are on board, somebody, you know, whatever location where someone's manufacturing, um, those that need to be accounted for, those need to be, um, regulated in the sense of having somebody make sure that there's, that everything is, uh, uh, having the, a robust policy in place or robust ordinance allows a CEO to go through and make sure that there's enough, um, safety exists, that there's, that there's no, there's ventilation, that there's anything that could be explosive hazard or flammable hazard is taken effect. So our firefighters don't show up to fight a fire because they report a house fire, but what, what they're in, in essentially doing is walking into an explosive hazard.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and, and those are, those are concerns that, that the state was kind of putting forth in, in their trainings. So, um, that's something that we can definitely look at as far as getting the, the ordinance to be, to be up to date. That, that would be obviously an increase in fees, um, to include caregivers if, if that's, uh, what's coming down the pipe, but also, um, figuring out a way to, uh, basically contacting the state. I have a couple of numbers, some folks, uh, that just straight up gave us when, when we started talking about kind of the, the things that affect Sumner. Uh, one guy like jumped out of his seat and, and came over and gave me his card and he was like, hey, give me a call. You know, and to, we, this is, this is our job, you know, uh, you know, to, to make sure that, that these things are happening. They're gonna happen anyways, the state is, you know, says they're, they're legal. But at the same token, if, if these, uh, these activities are taking place, there's a fee that includes checkup, inspection, and, uh, and all that is, is, is legit, so.
Okay.
Could I ask a question? So you're saying you're mulling over what ordinances? Have you have a list of ordinances you think may be addressed this year in your month plan?
We haven't really settled on anything, um, specific. Does anyone have anything they wanna speak to or, or talk about?
I think something for mobile, RVs would be good.
I mean, uh, around how long they can sit and what they have to be hooked up to and that kinda stuff. We don't have an ordinance that would address that, other than the campground.
Or, or we follow what the state would say.
We, we follow what the state says. Um, essentially, this was kind of when we were looking at the new, um, uh, housing law that came into effect last summer, um, in that the change that we wanted to put into the subdivision was gonna cover accessory dwelling units. One of the reasons why I, I, I wanted to get the verbiage into the ordinances that we had was 'cause I could see the issue unfortunately in Sumner isn't gonna be that people are gonna start building up homes, that, uh, people are gonna start bringing in, in RVs and, and, and not that there's anything that I think is particularly wrong with that, where a person lives is where a person lives. Um, but if we're making room for people to move, potentially, we could be, you know, increasing our population, increases our traffic, increases the, the, what we have on our schools. So, you know, I think that's something that we can.
Safety.
But not necessarily increase the tax.
Tax base.
Tax base to offset that cost.
Yeah.
So we do have things around wastewater, don't we?
Mm-hmm. We do.
Either septic or well, see if it's gonna sit. I think the challenge is the fact that people will move them around. Say they've moved them after 120 days and then if they're being inhabited.
I've done a little bit of research and I think that there's ways that you can write it, so that would be difficult. How about st- so if a house burns and they need to live in one for a while?
Yeah, well, that's one thing, but to actually have it as, as an additional dwelling or, because, you know, lots of deal with what would take to build a house or do the appropriate permitting, then that creates challenges.
So smaller than like accessory dwelling unit type, something?
It's really not an accessory dwelling unit though, it's terrible.
What I mean is like the side, like as far as the size, like a hundred and ninety square foot. Type.
And you need a camper trailer, camper.
Yeah, camper, okay. Okay.
Do a lot of towns have regulation, have ordinances that are directly related to campers and RVs and?
Something.
It's a, it's a mixed bag that I've found.
Have any of you looked at the subdivision or site plan ordinances? I'm looking at it, I think they need updating.
Site plan.
Site plan.
Site plan review.
Yep.
I didn't remember working GWI.
Right.
I know they're both long and complicated. And they both have checklists and kind of procedural as well as elements of it.
So we have a meeting since like getting this whole new role of how the notifications are gonna come in. We had one since that, like? Um, so we've been discussing how to basically take some stuff off of Norma's plate basically and, and, um, make it so like if someone puts in a building notification and they don't fill it all out correctly, et cetera, they don't put all the things on it that they're supposed to, they just, you know, it asks for where it's gonna be on your lot, et cetera. And we've had people just draw a square or rectangle and put ten by twelve because they're planning on building a ten by twelve shed. Well, that doesn't tell us where, where it doesn't set backs and stuff like that. So what was happening was Norma was ended up having to call these people back and she would have to try to get the information, et cetera. And then she was getting attitudes on the phone and, um, really isn't something that she should have been doing anyways. So kind of just working on a, on a more efficient way to get notifications, get them to the planning board and whether they're accepted or denied, et cetera, that communication back and forth with people. Not on phone calls because things get lost in translation. People hear what they wanna hear or they don't hear what they're supposed to be hearing, et cetera. Um, so trying to do that like via email, so we have a, or, you know, paper, so we have a actual, like, I gave you this information. Um, so how it's gonna basically work is if you don't have your building notification filled out properly, it's just gonna get kicked back to you until you can actually read and follow the instruction. Black and white on the piece of paper, it's very easy to actually, you know, figure them.
Two checklists.
There's two checklists, is like, you know, did you fill this out, drop, you know, drew your whatever? And if you can't follow the directions, uh, you know, I guess we'll get you some assistance, but.
I'll be willing to meet with people if you want.
Yeah, so what's gonna end up happening is Jeff or, or somebody from the planning board, probably the CEO or, or the chair is gonna come in and actually go through the, go through the notifications, make sure they're filled out properly before they actually go to the planning board. So that way it just keeps things a lot needy, neater and tidy and it's not adding a whole bunch of, you know, work and stress and aggravation to Norma on her days.
So, um, we have one right now, but he's, he's not in town, he's out, out of state he works. So he brought in one and it was confusing, so he brought in a second one and I showed him why the first one was confusing, but he's gonna come, he's gonna come to the meeting anyway, so.
And make the second one confusing too?
Well, it's about the same as the first one.
We'll get there, we'll, we'll get everybody trained.
Well, and then we have the, um, mobile home park. So somehow the building notification that we originally brought in last year got misplaced. We don't know where. So he submitted new building notifications, Eric Grandin, the, um, manager or whoever he is. But he didn't give me the information I needed, so I finally got an email address for Melanie Abrams, who deals with, I guess, she's secretarial, and I sent her, I scanned all of these and sent them to her and asked her to help me figure out which one is which, and she said, okay, thanks, and I haven't heard that. So I sent her something last Thursday or Friday asking if she'd gotten around to it and I haven't heard anything back. So I, you know, I'm at a loss for what I'm supposed to do with that.
Well, that's on them.
That's on them, yep.
Well, I mean, I don't, I, I have no idea whether he's ever approved the building notifications. I don't know.
No.
So they're missing so much of the data, we, it, we couldn't, we couldn't make a move on it.
I mean, because.
And, but that was before your time.
I mean, the, the money has been paid, so it's not that they owe anything. It's just, you know, do you just say?
Yeah, he had almost all the information that night as far as like what mobile home with what law, et cetera. He was missing two at that point, but this was also pre-Diane and pre-you, so that information.
All I've got is this sheet and it doesn't tell me on these building notifications, it just says map and lot nineteen.
Yep.
You know, map and lot twenty-three, I don't know what that means. Cause their lot numbers are different than what we have for map and lot, so I'm... So, you know, do I keep bugging them? Do I?
Yeah.
Have somebody else call, do I, what do I do?
Well, you're not gonna issue a permit, a doctor's permit until they.
They're already in there, that's.
They're already in on some of them.
I'm pretty sure all of them are occupied, I could be wrong.
Um, I went, drove through.
One is unoccupied.
One is unoccupied.
One. It looked like they were working on some of them when I went through.
I mean, they paid, they finally paid for the plumbing, the internal plumbing and Fred approved that, so that's.
He just comes to one meeting, I wonder if we could invite him back and maybe just get it done in the meeting.
Yep. Which, I mean, you can send an email and try to do that.
I don't have an email for him, I'm just gonna go with him.
Or one of us can call him or something.
Yeah, we can call him.
Um, did you, sorry, I haven't had a chance to talk to you, Jeff. Did anyone know or did we look into that, um, whether that driveway entrance ordinance was in place before or after this past meeting?
So I found, I found some stu- some of the old ordinance and yeah, it says that no, no driveway should be outside of, should, no driveway should be outside of what already exists for a driveway, which means it cannot open up. Which, um, I don't know if someone's ever made contact with, um, I, I could've swore it was, it was Walden Litchfield, what the paper had said, but I, when I Googled Butterfield Estates, Sumner, Maine, uh, one of the, one of the first things that came up was a, a news article from the Sun Journal. It basically said that the town was having issues with Cliff McNeil at the time over opening, cutting through the berm and opening up the driveway. And I, I don't know if someone from the town who, you know, been here sometime recalls or helped.
The state came back and then shut it down, they shut it down on the level on the plan, wasn't that happened?
Cause all the, yeah, all of the information we got, so the state approved it.
Well, the state permit though explicitly says that you have to follow local ordinances. The lights and all across the.
So they approved the building, the driveway permit and all, like we had an ordinance against it, so it was on us?
Well, I mean, when you, when you consider, if you're from the state, would you check a local municipality? Somebody, you just assume somebody's on the up and up. You know, I, I'm sure they don't, they don't call us, you know.
Yeah.
The, the town office and say, you know, hey, Norma, give me the dirty on the town and, you know. So they, they basically say, yeah, everything meets our criteria, check it off, here you go. And then somebody decided to act on that.
If it was an ordinance prior to this past, uh, this past mobile home ordinance that we.
I think somebody needs to double check if there's any way that we have saved older. May I approach the bench?
Where's my gavel? I meant to bring the gavel.
Yeah, you stand up with a badge, you wanna gavel.
So this is our, this is our current ordinance and this is the one that was, that existed prior to. And who was it?
Directly on two Exiting Quarter Street. No law, any mobile home park shall have that. So I would say we need to find this complete ordinance and send this to that lady.
And then why can you remember it?
I'll tell them they're in violation. So we're ultimately looking for voluntary compliance.
It's already told me they're gonna hold us off.
Told me after the meeting, so I thought, you know, my side is, you know.
I think he wants to talk to you because every time he mentions Fred, he's like, Fred keeps talking about he, him, who's he? Who's he? So I assume it's you that he, cause you're the one who's been talking to Fred.
I mean, I've talked to Fred and I don't, I don't think I've talked to him about this. If, uh, the way I feel, just based off of how the rest of the conversations have gone with you, if Eric Grandin wants to speak to me, he can come to a planning board meeting.
Okay, alright.
And, uh, we'll get, we'll get his words on paper.
Okay.
Yep, I like that.
So are you looking at minutes? Cause these guys were both on the board at the time that original discussion took place, but a lot of them missed.
Um, I basically, I brought up the old ordinance and the new ordinance.
Twenty fifteen.
Showed me that there's a, a letter from.
Twenty fifteen, there was.
Bonnie Bishop.
Bonnie Bishop sends Cliff McNeil.
You can't, you have to, you have to.
There's no law in a mobile home park shall have particular access directly onto a public street.
Fill the berm back in.
Fill the berm back in, which I think, I think he did.
I think they did one time.
But then it, then it opened up again somewhere.
Maybe it was a rainstorm that washed out.
Yeah.
This is, this is the new one. Okay.
So, yeah.
So I thought he said that.
Let's try to get Eric here and we'll go, we'll stop there.
He was living there in that trailer at the time.
Yep, no.
I'll keep it safe.
You got it, Mike.
He was running the trailer there, you know.
Alright. What else do we have to go over for planning board, select board, conversation?
Um, we are sitting on a, on a, um, bill notification for a porch.
Reading Road?
On Reading Road, yep, you're, so you're aware of it. So, um, the issue is that it was surveyed and I think, uh, the owner, um, very simply said, well, just obviously put, put the line between, between these two properties, cause it was a four acre property.
With two homes.
With two homes on it.
Right.
Which is, which is legit, totally okay, but when it was actually officially surveyed, one of the properties got, got shortchanged acreage and is now below the two acre minimum. So we've, we've gone to them a few times, um, with kind of what our expectations is get it resurveyed to survey that this was a four acre lot that's being cut down in the middle. Not just what looks good, but that there's two acres on one, one, two acres on another. So we have plans to reach back out in a few months. Um, but we're, we're, that's, that's one of the other final things we're kind of sitting on is, you know, while we haven't approved this, this bill notification because essentially the owner.
It's half of the fact anyways.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it was, it was built before we got the bill notification. But, um, uh, I, I think the owner inadvertently made the acre, the, the, the home and property under the, the two acre minimum.
But you, is that state law, the non-conforming part?
No, that's, that's town ordinance.
Yeah, just the town.
Yeah, but you can't subdivide a lot under and make it non-conforming.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
We, we can't create a lot that's non-conforming, right?
Yeah.
I don't think there's any.
So when that decision took place, it was a title division?
It was, it was a title division, right, in August?
It was a tenancy deed, I think.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, tenancy deed, yeah.
So that, that actually, I would think would fall on the surveyor because he, so when I surveyed outland, my surveyor was like, what's your ordinance? He, and in fact, he knew the ordinance.
Yeah.
He's like, your town has two, two acre minimum. And I was like, yeah, so that's how he made sure that it was like people want five or, you know.
However it happened, I, I do believe it was, it was done in the air.
Right.
It was, you know, but I don't.
Right, they just went split it up.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, that's, that's what I think, that's how I, that's what I feel. But, um, when, once again, when trying to reach out, you know, kind of Norma gets the brunt of people's ire because, you know, they're, you know, they just, they don't wanna deal with it, it's in their mind, it's, it's over and done with and, you know, and so, yeah.
So on the town map currently, if I open that up.
If you open up and look at that, it'll say four acres. It'll say four acres.
It just got s- just got divided in the.
Yeah, in August, so nobody has gone through yet and.
Oh, okay, so. But their taxes, when they get their taxes, it'll say one point something, point nine?
Point seven.
I, I, I don't know, I don't know.
That's how we understand it.
That's, that's what I think.
That's almost divided currently, yeah, by the, yeah. Yeah, it's not that line. There's plenty of acre, the land's there, it's not like, yeah, it's just a paper. It's imaginary line, really.
I just need to go back to a lawyer.
Yeah. And just get it done. And that, uh, that probably costs money.
Yeah.
You know, which is the type of way they're upset about having.
Sure.
When it was a four acre lot, it was fine.
Yep.
Because there were two, two mobile homes on the four acre.
Everything's still the same other than where this imaginary line connecting two dots is gonna be if they ever set, realistically. So.
But joint tenancy thing, so I don't know if that makes any difference.
Right, it's in his best interest to make it two acres on both sides, cause.
That's exactly what I said.
Once the mobile home.
Verbatim.
Alls you can do is replace the mobile home, if it's two acres, you can build a house. So it's, it's definitely been their interest, but, you know. So speaking of that, I talked to Jason Gammon the other day. He is two seventy-nine Reading Road with the building, a tool pill that's losing boards to the street. Um, he was, he was fine to talk to, um, I think he was kind of shocked that I even called him and told him that, you know, figure out a way to take care of the issue. I asked him if he was trying to salvage this building, he said nothing and they were salvageable, whatever. He just doesn't have the money to take care of it, he's trying to pay his bills and get by and what have you. So I just told him to, um, I guess he had talked to Fred, I haven't spoken to Fred. Um, I was hoping he was gonna be here tonight, um, to see if he actually had to talk to him or not, but, uh, but he said that he was gonna hopefully tackle it in spring. Um, I told him to reach out to us if, you know, it's a, if it's a money thing or whatever, like, is enough ingenuity around? We could just pull it the other direction and get it leaned the other way so it's not flopping out in the road. Um, it doesn't have to cost a whole lot of money, so I did talk to him. So I need to, yeah.
Is it the actual house or the?
The process between the.
Go to the pot, go to the brick, go to the roof.
Yeah, he's probably paying taxes.
Yeah, I mean, he's probably, he's probably, yeah, he's probably paying taxes on it, so. Am I missing anything? No? Um, yeah, alright. So, um, I'm gonna double check this with Fred, but we're gonna be posting on the, um, MMA, uh, probably on the sign up front for a CEO position. Um, so the history of that is a little over a year ago. I spoke with Fred and asked him kind of like what his plans were going forward, um, and basically was hoping that he would get, be able to help us get somebody in the role, in the position of CEO and that he was, you know, eventually gonna retire, et cetera. Um, so that's what I had been thinking and the select board had been thinking for the past year was Fred's eventually gonna retire here and we need to think about getting somebody to, you know, I was hoping that Fred would let somebody shadow him, et cetera. Uh, and then it came to a planning board meeting like a month and a half ago, I think it was just before Christmas, and Fred was complete one eighty on it and was like, you're trying to get rid of me and whatever? And I was like, I was like a deer in the headlights, like, I thought we had a conversation on the phone like a year ago, like. We were, we were going on this direction, everybody thought the whole thing, and then he was like hoping to, um, he was hoping to retire from Otis Field as their CEO and pick, and stay on with Sumner and pick up maybe another part-time town or what have you. Um, so rumor from all my colleagues here is that Fred's now switched back and with a lot of complications with his eyes and et cetera, or what have you, um, I haven't talked to him personally, um, that he's probably just gonna be good if we look for another CEO, so, I'm gonna speak with, hopefully speak with Fred tomorrow, just double check, um, because this is a little bit of hearsay, but, um, told some trusted people, uh, so, um, if that's the case, we're gonna post for that, uh, on MMA's website, and somebody could drop a resume or application, whatever, off here, resume. Um, so, if you are not the CEO and you're interested in that, we do have the, kind of like the, what do you call it, like a handbook or whatever, on what you need to get up to speed on, um, those teachings or those classes. Mostly can be done online, right?
Correct.
So, it can mostly be done online, um, and you can get up to speed on that and get all the certifications that we need.
And you can do it as you're going, I mean, you can.
I believe, yeah, I believe part of it we can do as you're in the role.
So, CEO, you have twelve months.
Yeah, twelve months.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, so that paperwork is in there on my desk, if anyone cares to, um, send anybody in or come look for yourselves.
You can have a deadline for it, or is it gonna be open-ended?
Um, well.
Probably until we get some.
Probably, yeah, it'll probably be open-ended, because I don't, you know, it depends on what we get for applications or what have you, um, so, you know, we post it and we get flooded with applications, then we'll, we'll, uh, we'll go for air, but, yeah, we'll close it, yeah, so.
That's gonna be a problem.
Um, you know, so currently it's, um, the town has budgeted thirteen thousand, uh, for the position, Fred is only be getting five of that thirteen thousand. Um, so, yeah, that's all the other piece of that pie that I can think of. Does anyone have any questions, concerns, wanna yell at us, not?
No, the, um.
Yeah, you look like you wanna yell at me, you wanna yell at me?
No, I don't wanna yell at you.
Okay.
The, the CEO position isn't, wouldn't that generate some revenue for the town though, through, uh, plumbing permits and stuff, I think doesn't Fred get a portion of what?
So, he gets the town, the town's portion to do the inspection.
To do the septic.
Does he do the septic inspection, so like it's what, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars, I think currently, is, is what, is what he's getting, which is the town's portion, because we're not covering that in his stipend, we're just, we're just, you know, he's getting the five thousand dollars is his stipend, and he's, he's keeping the town's portion when he does an inspection. Um, for a septic, um, most of the houses now typically that have been, that I've seen notifications for have been manufactured, so, um, you know, so the internal inspection, plumbing inspection and stuff have been pretty limited, um.
Would this position be part of that as well? Would go along with it?
Help, yeah, yep, yep, so, depending on how things go in the future, and what the, uh, expectation is, might just, the town might be keeping the one eighty-seven and the stipend might change going forward, we'll set this, we'll have to sort that out as we go. Um, as far as this fiscal year, um, we have to operate in that thirteen thousand dollar budget, but, um.
So, are we advertising it for full-time, or minimum number of hours, or minimum number of days, so that we get adequate coverage?
Um, I don't, that's a tough one, I mean, we probably only did ten, maybe twelve building notifications that were actually inspectable, that needed any type of inspection last year, so they warrant something full-time. Um, I guess my thoughts or thinking about this over the last month was if, uh, and this is all depending on town meeting and what the town approves for budget, but if we went up to a eighteen, nineteen thousand dollar a year budget, um, the hope would be that we would have a CEO that would be willing to put in eight to twelve hours a week, whether that be in the office one full day, which would be ideal for us, not necessarily for somebody else, but that would give us the ability to offer somebody around thirty dollars an hour to do that, that role. And, you know, I know the, the budget committee a few years ago had, had wanted to do twenty or twenty-five dollars an hour, expecting somebody to be at twenty hours a week for, you know, twenty thousand five hundred or whatever the, whatever it was back then, which we had to cut because of the LD one, all the history with that. Um, the problem is, is you can go work at McDonald's and make twenty bucks an hour, you know, five guys averages twenty-six dollars.
Uncertified, untrained, and.
Exactly, so to get, to ask somebody to, to go through all that, and then, and then, um, I think the hope was that, at least for some people, that the, that the the CEO at that point would drive around and look for fines from those twenty hours and create some revenue that way. I don't see that flying with this particular town, um, no, I don't really support that, um.
Windshield inspection.
Yeah, so, um, so I think it would be more conducive to just say, twenty thousand dollars a year, if we get the town to approve that, we can pay somebody a decent wage to come here and do eight to twelve hours of work a week, maybe even be in the office one specific day, so if someone has come down, they could go through the building notifications and make sure everything's filled out the way, and they assume all that role, so it's not on, you know, not on the, well, we've already taken it off, off her plate anyways, but it's also not on the planning board that's getting a ten dollar a meeting stipend too, so. Um, yeah. Uh, so that's kind of, that was kind of my thoughts on the whole thing, um, that will all depend on who applies, town approves the budget, et cetera. Um, so that, that was all just thoughts, but, um, you have anything to add?
I think you've covered it pretty well, I think that's everything that we've discussed over and over. Um, yeah, uh, it's, it's, it's a tough one, you know, get somebody that's up to speed to come in for that, them dollars, you know, it's, and, uh, yes, so.
It's tough.
Yeah.
So, you know, like we had a, um, someone call in that got kind of taken on Facebook Marketplace for renting a, renting a place here in town on Front Street, and, you know, she's like, well, the CEO gets paid to do X, Y, Z, and it's like, yes, but, you know what I mean, it's, it's a lot to ask for somebody, you know, to, I mean, technically it is, and then we write a letter, and then it takes months, and it, you know what I mean? You know how the whole process works, we write a letter, it gets to the landowner, and then the landowner, what the call, it's just a long drawn out process. The person is already moved, but they're trying to figure out how to have the building condemned, et cetera, because it's not inhabitable, and, um, so that one's, that one's.
Plus, there actually, uh, CEO takes on potentially, uh, irate residents.
Sure, yeah.
That's, that's, that's so many dollars on our, all nine dollars.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, all this is a thankless job, we all know that.
Is that the one, is that the one bowl where the old store used to be?
I, I don't know which one it is she got.
Well, one of them that Fred Campbell used to own, that was condemned once.
Yeah, Fred just condemned one when I was on the planning board over there, I don't remember which, I don't remember which one it was, it might have been that one, I'm not sure.
Couldn't anybody move it, if it's condemned, couldn't anybody move it?
He only tried to move somebody, rent it.
Yeah, I.
Made it, non-resident landlord, that was what was happening back.
Yeah, yeah, one of, the one that I specifically remember, the, the gentleman that owned the property lived in Kentucky. And I was on a conference call with the, with Fred and him and whatever, um, so it's, it's not just as cut and dry as you're gonna do, you know what I mean, it's just, it's just not. So, we're just hopeful for voluntary compliance.
Well, it's like the building down by East Sumo, they condemned that one and given the guy so much time to tear it down and.
Yeah, we had to fight tooth and nail to get that all the way underground, yeah.
Took him, what, three years and so forth, and he finally started picking away at it, started tearing it down.
Pulling into the road.
Yeah, and still a little bit of a mess, but yeah, I got the majority of it down, but, yeah, yeah, I was on the planning board, but not, and. So, none of those avenues are fast, um, so anyways.
All the reasons why we need money in the budget, so we can have a little more hours for CEO.
Yep, yep, and then, if it goes to the legal route on any of these ordinances, then the town also has to have the budget to take it to court. Which, that's three hundred dollars an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pick you back.
Pick you back, exactly, so it's, yeah, it's, it's not just black and white, right? You know what I mean, it's just not, oh, here's the ordinance, you have to do it this way, it's like, right, but then we gotta hire a lawyer.
Man are getting rid of a good ISO, uh, find the people and make sure it gets done.
You're hired.
Not sure what that position is exactly, but. Alright, so, we have any more planning boards, select boards, joint meetings? You have to approve your minutes?
It's on the agenda.
Yes, I mean, we can do it now, or we can do it in the next plan.
It's up to you, if you wanna wait until you're.
I, I won't hold on, I don't have time.
I did look them over.
Yeah, same, it feels good.
So, is the coverage in plan still in your pocket?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we are meeting on, can I talk about this?
Yep.
Um.
The AFCO?
We're meeting on.
February eighteenth.
Eighteenth, February eighteenth with Erica Buffkins, and she works at AFCO, and she's gonna sit down with us, and basically we'll start building our plan and, and how we're gonna go forward. And, uh, and get it, get it up to speed without hopefully causing too much.
Too much expense.
Too much expense and.
Um, do you want to approve these?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve the planning board minutes as written.
Second.
One second.
Alright, favor.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Four, okay.
Yeah. Alright, so we are gonna adjourn the joint meeting at six forty-two, and we will start regular, regularly scheduled programming at six forty-three. Alright, so, approval of select board meeting minutes for January fourteenth. No, I got the wrong one there.
Look the other one.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah. Um, so I looked these over, did you have any issues?
Nope.
Um, so I make a motion that we approve January fourteenth select board meeting minutes.
Uh, second.
All in favor? Chapman was supposed to sign these this weekend, no.
Was he here?
He's from all this weekend, yeah. So, Diane's fault, she's bombarding and stuff. So, warrant number thirty-four, expenses seventy-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-one cents, checks fifteen eight fifty-three through fifteen eight sixty-seven. Receipts of ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and one cent, receipts thirteen ninety, fourteen sixty-six. Percent of real estate, uh, twenty twenty-three real estate taxes year to date is at ninety-four point three. Hang up on the ninety-four.
Yeah.
Uh, percent of twenty twenty-four real estate taxes collected year to date is seventy-eight point two. Um, do we have anything for open session currently? Alright, we'll double check before we close, um, I don't think we need to have an update from you, Jeff, since we just did. Uh, Kristen gave her update here, uh, Mountain Valley Middle School update regarding the use of the former Mexico PB to house the sixth grade class. Kids were back in the classroom learning last Thursday, and all generally seemed very happy to be back, all fourth grade levels are in classrooms now. Although there are still some things, uh, to get worked out, the new building will not realistically be completed until the end of December. Superintendent annual evaluation was completed last night with a majority vote outside of executive session to approve her three percent raise. Her contract is fulfilled June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Please remember that all regular meetings can be viewed via YouTube channel found on the RSU ten district website, and Kristen can be reached via email at So, that is your RSU ten update. Tried to email Doug and Brian, did not get a response, so we'll follow up with them again. Mr. Corson.
He's not here.
He is not here.
Well, I don't have much to say, ground's froze, I can't do no roadwork.
Perfect, um, so, I wanted to bring this up, and do you see if you wanna bring this to the roads committee or not? But this is.
He's talking to you. Sean.
Your kid's in the back, what are you doing?
He, he shines it up. Special call from.
Okay, uh, so, this is the estimate for inspection of the box culvert and the two bridges, do you want this to go to roads committee?
Yeah, but I don't really think we're gonna do that, do you?
I don't know.
That's a lot of money to just come and put a weight limit on a bridges.
Well, they're gonna inspect it and, yeah.
And they're gonna inspect it, and they're gonna say they're no good anyways. That's what they're gonna say, I mean, the Andrews Bridge has been in, uh, making for five, six years now.
No, not the Andrews Bridge, this is just the two on River Road and, uh, and the box.
Okay, so we can watch.
No, the other ones get inspected because they are state, they, they, they are on roads, so they, the state inspects them every two years regardless. But they don't do River Road because it's now an easement, or it is easement. So, hand this over to roads committee, or?
Yep, I would say so, yeah, get their opinion.
So, we're gonna.
They've, they've probably only put a, either put a weight limit on it, or say.
Nope.
You're gonna block it.
No traffic blocking, yeah.
So, and that's sixteen thousand dollars for us, we, we could do that.
Exactly, thirteen thousand, a lot of money, just to do that.
Couple signs, some boulders.
How much a Jersey Berry is?
Sixty-five dollars a piece.
Yeah, not that bad.
Ain't that bad, no.
We can just get the line, those up.
So, what else do we have for, we had something else for road committee, right?
No, I'm just kidding, I told Amy R A to email her the new spreadsheet.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll see if I can call roads committee meeting, just, the other thing I wanted to put a bug in your ear about, because I came up and saw you the other day. Um, so your plan for grinding Bonnie Road and Gammon Road, and then you said you wanted to drive, have them drive on it for a year, pack it, obviously. Is that, are you planning on that being your twenty-five, twenty-six budget to pave, or twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Twenty-five, twenty-six, okay.
Yep. And I was gonna get some prices and stuff, but, uh, I just think it's too far up to even get prices right now.
Well, you're gonna have to for your budget. Speaking for the budget committee.
But I'm thinking like.
Couple months.
Yeah, you got a couple months to wait.
Yeah, April, you know.
So, the roads, the roads repair, maintenance, et cetera, the roads that you have your budget for, that's gonna have to basically carry you. If you're gonna use twenty-five, twenty-six for potentially paving, if the town approves that, that's gonna have to carry you till spring of twenty-seven.
Yep.
Yeah, alright.
That's why we need all the numbers.
Yeah, so as, I just, we were talking the other day, and that's what you mentioned, but I wasn't sure if your mind was at twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-seven, alright, cool. Alright. Let's see, Brandon, so we don't have an ACO update, or do I have any?
No.
No.
I think so. Um, forms, reports, correspondence, new business, nothing, old business, Stewart case has been postponed again to Valentine's Day, would that be sweet? At one thirty PM, are you gonna bring a box of chocolates with you?
Sorry, I didn't mean that out loud.
Uh, so, yeah, it got postponed again, um, Bill called, and it was something to do with Bob's lawyer was already in another criminal case or something.
Yeah, he's got a murder case going on, I guess, and, uh, so.
So, it was.
He's unavailable.
Wasn't, wasn't available. Um, so that's that, maybe on the fourteenth, this will be the end of it, maybe, maybe not.
If anybody else has things. If anybody else has thing that they would like to put in either written form or email to me. For communication of that on that date, still looking for.
Okay.
Personal comment, personal letter or whatever.
Okay, um, just in that, maybe I'd probably, I don't know, get them all shut, but. Um, should I talk about that letter? Doesn't matter, right, I don't think it matters, at this point, I don't, every time Bill talks to the liaison, it's always. It's a done deal if they accept, et cetera, unless the judge, unless the judge does something different. Um, but we did basically send a letter to Drummond Woodsum because every time the DA calls the. Drummond Woodsum, then they contact us, it costs the town five, six hundred bucks, and that's literally no joke, I mean, the last one was like, what, five ninety-seven?
Total three seventy-seven for two minutes of phone call.
It's crazy. So we're sending Drummond Woodsum a letter that they've basically no more communications with the DA on our behalf if. They get contacted by anybody to contact us to see, you know, whatever, but. Um, we're done spending money on this particular incident.
And it was nothing important, I mean, it was just, you know, okay, well, the DA has requested that we give them, uh. The unredacted report, so. So they, you know, so they're charging us for something the DA requested, which I didn't think was quite right anyway.
It's crazy.
But.
Well, only because they ended up contacting somebody on the select board to see if it was okay that we gave. I don't understand all the legal reasons for this, but it doesn't make any sense to me, so, um. Either way, at this point, they have all the, they have the unredacted, they have all the information. Unless the judge is swayed in sentencing, it's not gonna change the outcome, uh, so that's where we are with that. So the Board of Appeals, we still have two openings on that, so we can have a five board. Five-person board, the planning board has one opening for an alternate. We're looking for members for the Comprehensive Plan Committee to update the Comprehensive Plan, which was done, last done in twenty fourteen. Um, so as Jeffrey Melmer said on February eighteenth. You are just a disruption to class, huh?
You're gonna have to have a timeout here.
Sorry, I used to have, I used to have a desk in the principal's office in elementary school. I know it's hard to believe, but it happened. Uh, so that's February eighteenth, we'll meet on that. Late fees for dog registration and property taxes begin on February first. Uh, February eleventh, twenty twenty-five, the select board meeting will commence at four fifty-five, there will be an executive session beginning at five with legal counsel. After the executive session, the regular meeting will resume at six, the public is wel- welcome to observe the motion to move into executive session. Please note there will be no open session until the regular meeting resumes at six, um, so that basically is just us meeting with. A lawyer to speak and talk to them about being our town's attorney. Um, you know, there's nothing like, we don't have any legal issues coming up, but that we're aware of. That, uh, but we just wanna talk to somebody about. Basically not being on retainer, but being on retainer essentially, um, so that's what that's all about. Open session, some to come up with something?
The, so the as- actual aspect of having a legal person is that, is the kind of attorney where you're talking to is going to help us. Get rid of town property, that we don't, the the lean properties that we keep getting and we can't.
They have experience with real estate, yeah.
Okay, good, so.
Yeah, so.
That would be part of it, hopefully.
Yeah, so a couple of the properties that we actually were gonna list for sale, people came in and caught the taxes up. We were under contract on the Newton property, um, but they can't get a clear title, um, through all. All their certs, the the title company worked on it for a couple of months and basically just threw their hands up. Um, so there's a couple options with that, I guess, one is we could, uh. Make an appeal to the courts and get a, basically make, have them make the judgment that is actually entitled to us. So that one's kind of a, a tough one, I mean, we were under contract, we would have had it all, they would have actually, the family would have received some money. And town would have got all their, all their stuff due, uh, Bill and I both went and walked through it this past week. Uh, the original building, the entire first floor is falling into the basement, the rubble basement. And the. Um, roof rafters and the collar ties are not too long for the world, they're all rotted. So that whole original piece will be inside the foundation at some point, if we had a heavy snow next month, next couple of months, maybe next year. Um, that will be down, the other little add-ons to the building are already collapsed, caving in. And the new section actually isn't, it would be salvageable if somebody wanted to do something with it. So, the thought was originally when we went in to look at it, is that maybe we would offer, um. Offer it to the ladies auxiliary to do something with, whether it be, just if the, um. Just getting the stuff that they sell at the yard sale in and out of that horse shed, they call it, or the horse barn over at the church is kind of difficult. So that was the only option we had if we just deed it over to them, but that wouldn't actually, you know. Wouldn't solve the problem, wouldn't get us the, I think we're at about fifteen thousand in taxes and the fees on it. Um, so it wouldn't get that, um. So if you guys, if somebody wanted to buy it, knowing that they couldn't maybe get a clear title on it for fifteen thousand dollars. Put that out there, you know, it is salvageable, then the new star, the new part of the building does have a poured foundation, which is in decent shape, the. Um, floor joists are all in good shape, it would, it would have to be gutted inside and.
Quite a bit of mold in there.
Quite a bit of mold in that section, but you could gut it in that section, that's probably about twenty-four by twenty or something.
Yeah, maybe a little action that, but it's true, I mean, it's it's all, it's it's pretty solid.
That part's solid.
How many acres is it?
Four, six total, four total. There is, there is a well in the septic, uh, the back, the back is pretty, pretty wet, so, you know, majority of the four acres. You're not gonna do a whole lot with it, but. That's been tossed around.
There's a leach field right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it covers most.
If you pulled everything and and cleaned up everything, you could have a, you know, a small parking lot over there, um.
Where they need it.
Yeah, yeah, so that's all we're at, that, um.
So we've also got some that are non-compliant lots, right? Couple are not.
There's a couple, yeah.
There's a couple, there's, there's like one that's landlocked down by the meadows. There's a few of them. That I think, I think there's a few of them that we can.
Who would buy the non-compliant lot to get them so that they would be.
Right.
At least owned by somebody.
Sure.
Not us.
Yeah, we should probably get back looking at which ones we should attempt to sell, there's a few that I think would sell, um, that are just woodlots, essentially. There's two on Rosenberg, two of five acre lots on Rosenberg, there's twenty acres on Angie Liddy. Um, there's ten acres right down across from the mobiles, the campers down at the meadows. Was it Henry's or whatever, right in that little corner, there's ten acres there. Oh, I got the booker here. So.
You know, if we have that option to.
Yeah, we were all set to start moving these things, and then the first, we had, we'd given the realtor five properties, and then what, three of them came in and somebody paid the taxes up on. And then, so she went to the trouble of starting to go through all this, so, um, and then. Nothing, so, and then obviously the problem with the Newton, she got it sold, got the whole contract and everything. Dealt with the the Newton family that, you know, basically didn't want it sold until they talked to her, got that all squared away and then no clear title, so. Moving forward, uh, our hope is that we would work out something with, if we still use Julia, that we would. Pay her something for her services, if, you know, if there's something like the Newton's property title doesn't clear, she still makes something.
Cause she did commission.
Yeah, she did all that and it's just a bust, like it was all for nothing, so, um, so there's a few properties, um, then there's like. One that's a town-owned property out by Mister Glasses. It's a hundred and fourteen acres that somebody gave to the town, um, so that one, Bill and I have dropped the ball, we're both supposed to go out and walk it. And see if there's any harvestable timber on it, and then it was also, somebody said that it was a gravel pit.
Yep.
So, um, we need to get out there and look at it and find out, is there actually gravel there that we could actually be using? For, you know, bases on roads, et cetera, um, or can we harvest the timber off it and then sell? Problem with tax, tax-acquired properties is we can only sell it and there's no benefit to try to make any money off it other than the tax model, and the legal fees, you know.
That piece we own.
That piece we own, so that one.
Money in our pocket to get.
Make a town forest or something, it's a hundred and ten acres, that's a pretty good piece.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't know, like somebody said it used to be a gravel pit and not, so we wanna go out there and actually look around. Get eyeballing.
Go onto the properties.
Far Road?
Goes back up.
It's it's, it's landlocked, you didn't, you know, I think there's a right of way getting into it, I think there's two. Right of ways getting into, one across from the Andrews Road and one further down running that cuts back into that corner.
But, so there's a few, um. Yeah. So we'll do better in the spring. At getting some of them to sale, it'd be nice to get them sold, would have been really nice to get the Newton ones sold.
Yeah.
Um. If we don't do something with it, we're probably gonna have to.
It's gonna cost us money.
We're probably gonna have to tear it down.
Yeah.
Just so, I mean, I already kicked one squatter out of there last winter, so, um.
That's a desperate squad, dude.
Yeah, yep. Alright, anyone have anything else?
I wanna make a motion that we adjourn this meeting with the select board, uh, July, January twenty-eighth at, uh.
Seven oh three?
Seven oh three.
I second it, all in favor? Alright, thank you, everybody.